Okay, we have a thumbs up. We will, I'll welcome you to our first meeting in March. This is the regular meeting of Tuesday, March the 5th. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation given to us by Alderman Vaughn and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, spray. I am a God and I am a Father, I am a Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am a big brother, I am a redeemer, I am a salvation. Lord, you're only begotten, beloved son who were born of a virgin Mary, chosen with his earth for Father God who be allowed to be crucified, died and buried. But in three days, you raise your son from the dead. He sit at the right hand of the now making intersection, full of settles and he'll rest like us. Thank you for Jesus, Father. We thank you again so much for the presence of your Holy Spirit. We pray that you will let your Holy Spirit dwell among us. But Father God, we thank you for the angels that watched over us and protected us all day long and now brought us to this appointed place to handle these affairs of this city. Praying, God, that you will move on each and every last one of our hearts that would be concerned about what we was elected to do. Lord, that we will be fair and honest and true to each and every citizen of Starville. But Father God, we praying that you will continue all of these steps of ours because you said, "The steps of a good man are of our Lord." And Father, we ask you now that you will please forgive us all our sins and how much all our neighbor cities, Father God, that's struggling through the tornadoes. Lord, that you will bless and comfort them and guide them in the right direction. Oh, Father God, with their son, my homeless and son, my homie. But we know that you're the God that say you won't put no murders on them we can bear. We ask you that you would direct our thoughts. But now we ask you, Father God, that you will fill this place with your Holy Spirit. Bless us to be kind and mindful of one another, one another's decision, no matter what it is, and Lord, that we will look beyond all our faults and fulfill the needs of our heart, move the race to color them and sex among us. And God, that we will do the right thing. We will do the right thing. We can find a thousand ways to do wrong, but it's not one way to do right, 'cause we do right and be mindful of one another. We give all praise and unglory to you, God, because of who you are and what you are. Fathers and Jesus, amen.
Thank you all again. Welcome to our first meeting in March. Our first order of business will be to approve the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the consent agenda? Vice Mayor Perkins, do I see your hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, a couple of things I want to deal with. One, may I may not be necessarily right of order, want to remove item one under parks on consent agenda.
Okay.
And there's, yeah, item I, one for parks.
Okay.
And there is one other matter that I want to put on consent agenda, and that matter is located under police J1. I see our police chief is seeking the purchase of three new police vehicles. I think that's to the tune of maybe $27,615 each, and I'm gonna just take it that these vehicles are budgeted, so it seems to be reasonable for a 2019 Durango vehicle to be used by his department, so I'd like to put that on the consent agenda.
Any objection?
If I could ask two questions, more, if I could ask two questions so that there's some transparency for the public, and since we do this with every department that's going to be buying vehicles, these are state contract items, right, Chief?
Yes, ma'am. We did check with Parker McGee, and they can't match that price.
Perfect. Well, not perfect that they can't match it, but thank you for checking with them.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, these are, these are Durangos, which are SUVs.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of other law enforcement agencies use chargers.
Yes, ma'am.
And why would this be a better purchase for us?
We hadn't gone to chargers. We've entertained that idea. Right now, what I'm trying to do is, as you know, on the last purchase we did for the lease program, we purchased all SUVs because some of the Tauruses that we were purchasing were too small for some of the officers by the time they get all their gear, and that leaves absolutely no space for somebody who's being arrested back there. So, we did look at the Tauruses. What I'm trying to do now is, for these particular vehicles, we're gonna put them in administration so, 'cause some of the cars that my investigators have are old. So, by the time we get these three, they should be pretty much outfitted with the investigators. So, by the time the next lease program come up, we're gonna do all cars.
Okay.
So, I don't know if it's gonna be a charger. They was talking about redoing the Tauruses, so I can't say what it's gonna be, but it's, they're gonna be cars.
So, this is a, this, so this is a transition to, from SUVs with these purchases to the next purchases being a less expensive car.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and just in case anybody is wondering, these were not budgeted. These are being paid for from forfeited funds.
Yes, ma'am.
And those funds do cover the entire cost, right, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Any other questions to the chief while he's here? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, consent, do I hear everyone comfortable with consent? Okay, with that, we'll put that item, which is J1, on consent. Anything else? Anyone else wants, wanna move Alderman Vaughn?
Page five, item 200 parks, based on consent, please.
That's, that's, I'd say I can't discuss my kids' student number recused from that.
That's fine.
Yeah, that was our thought in leaving that one on consent, so, thank you. Okay, any, anyone else, anything else? Alderman Sisster.
Is, is there any reason not to put the bonds for the utilities department on consent? These are things that we've authorized, and this is just another step in the issuance process.
Okay.
We can make the vote if we need to, but it's...
Any concern with putting the bonds on consent? That was that, it's that big, long paragraph, which you can say no, and I don't have to read it.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor, Alderman Sisster, are you done with the floor? Okay, Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, are these revenue bonds gonna cover some sewer costs for Babylon Road?
Not to my knowledge. That's, that's not included in there. Is that correct, Chief? I mean, is that correct, Mr. Kemp? The, the, these, these bonds are not covering the cost for any sewer improvements to Babylon Road. Is that correct?
Objection, Mayor.
Okay, so not to put that one on consent. Good, I don't have to read it. Okay, anything else? Any other changes to the, to the consent? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I need a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consented items as accepted.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
I have a motion from Alderman Little to have a second.
Say.
Second, Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and I will now read the consent agenda. First, consideration of the minutes of the February 5, 2019, meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the February 15, 2019, work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starville. Under page three, under airport, we have a request approval to lease airport tillable land located south and west of the runway and taxiway and inside the fenced area for one year for farmland at George M. Bryan Field to Robert Ward, the sole bidder, at Page five is, under human resources, we have number one, request authorization to advertise for a lineman in the Starville Electric Department. Number two, we have request authorization to hire Carly Stringler as a digital media communication specialist intern for the city of Starville. Under police, we have request authorization to purchase three new police vehicles at $82,845 from state contract, 8200042004. Under utilities, we have request approval of lowest and best quote from Consolidated Pipe and Supply for the purchase of a pipe inspection camera, push camera, for the water division in the amount of $8,570. Under number two, we have request approval of lowest and best quote from Lewis Electric, Inc., for the construction of South Montgomery at Academy Road, traffic signal renovations in the amount of $97,600. Number three is request approval of the lowest and best quote from Ren Bodywork for the purchase of a truck utility bed for the water division in the amount of $8,467.72. And number four is request approval of a lowest and best quote from Fort Terra Pipe and Precast for Phase Two of the approved Pleasant Acres manhole material purchase in the amount of $5,490.98. And that concludes the consent agenda. Next item, we have, we have mayor's comments, and I've got several, several items to comment about. One of them is that I think everyone from last time we, or from a meeting prior to, we had determined that we were going to increase our security cameras in our community, and we have, we're going to be doing that, and what we wanna do is give some shout out, if you will, to former mayor Kemp and his family. We were gonna be putting some in the Cotton District, and he has agreed to bear the cost of, I believe, two cameras or three, two cameras?
Eventually, three.
Eventually, three cameras for the Cotton District. So, it certainly saves the city funds and allows us to put other cameras or more cameras in other locations, and since we're gonna put them in the Cotton District anyway, that's not, that's not outside our realm or our scope of work that we had planned. So, I just wanna say a public thank you to Mayor Kemp and his family for doing that, because I think that matters. That's a large area that we have events and congregations, and, and so I think that's a really good, good gift to, for the city. The other item is, I wanna thank the fire department and also the electric department for service to Columbus. In case anyone is not aware, the fire department responded on Saturday when the tornado came through. The electric department, I think, went out on Sunday, and I have the names of the electric department personnel who assisted all last week. I don't think they came home until Thursday night, actually. It's Randell Criswell, Robert Gilliland, August Der Hollands, Orlando Smith, and Shasta Plunkett. And while these are the folks that were in Columbus, there were obviously others who then picked up the slack for them while they were in town, and the same is true with the fire department. So, we wanna thank these folks who are willing to go help our neighbor, and I'm so glad that we have that relationship with the Columbus and with, is this part of the SMAC agreement? Is this the mutual aid agreement, or was this a separate agreement, Chief?
This is a separate agreement.
Okay.
Chief manager's calling.
Okay, well, anyway, I think it's a wonderful thing that we can do that and help our, help our sister city, so I wanted to give a shout out to those folks. And then, Chief, you have a presentation that you wish to make, so if you would come forward, please. Chief, you're over.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Four years ago when I started, education was a big deal for me. So, when I started, I started pushing education through the fire department. Four years ago also, Patrick Wanda started. Patrick is a 13-year veteran. He took over the Marina Community College program of public safety. So, we kinda partnered with them. He was gracious enough, him and his family, to pay for, what, nine hours for all firefighters, the first nine hours for all firefighters. So, he did that for us. We have 20 people right now that are in the program, nine safe graduated this year. So, of the firefight, 20, I think, about six of them never been to college, never thought about college. So, he introduced this program. He thought he was coming up here today to actually to talk about Marina Community College, but I wanted to give him an award.
Oh, that's...
Serve before self-award.
He taught me off.
For his, his dedication to the Starville Fire Department, to education. Right now, we're the best-trained fire department in the state, no doubt about that. By the end of this year, we'll be the best-educated fire department in the state. Over 60% of our firefighters have at least a social degree, so I think there's something good in our, I'm trying to get to 100%, so I just wanted to thank and introduce Patrick Wanda. He's a firefighter, four-year veteran, 13-year veteran, four-year Starville Fire Department, so the city should be very proud. We are a fire department as well, so, Mayor, will you come out and give a...
Absolutely, I will, and I...
And I'm ready. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. Picture your... Spin around. Thank you, Board.
You sure? Okay, you had me off guard. Right now, I'm...
All right, and that, that concludes any comments I might make at this point in time. Do we have any comments from the board of Alderman? Okay, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. Let me just start off on picking up on something that we just alluded to just a few minutes ago. I have residents on Babylon Road who have continuously and repeatedly asked me to respectfully inform the board that they do desire for the city to provide sewer services to that area, and as a result, I am wanting to pass this on to the board to hopefully take immediate action to initiate the process so these deserving taxpayers who were indexed into the city over 21 years ago in 1998 and provide the residents of this particular area with city sewer. So, hopefully, as we move forward, I, I think the board, in my opinion, can find the revenue and funds to do this if it is the will of the mayor and board. It's just a matter of providing these services to these citizens who are continuously and repeatedly asking for city sewer services. So, I just wanna make that request, and I'll be making this request from time to time. Do wanna thank Mr. Terry Kemp for what he is doing in areas that have already been approved by the board. Just do not want that to go unnoticed, but I do want to mention that we have a lot of things to do, but just do not want these constituents to be overlooked. Secondly and finally, Mayor, I just wanna take this brief opportunity this month, at this point, and I may address this a little bit later, to thank, and this will lead into something, to thank our existing nine department heads for what they do. Mayor, I just wanna say something very respectfully, in just a little housekeeping matter. I would like for the board to be apprised of any projects that the department heads are wanting to proceed with, and I wanna commend them for their thoughtfulness, their initiative, their persistence, and their vision to do things to move this city forward. And I said that, I was just reading an article in today's paper where one of our department heads appeared before a local board, and, and the point is, it's not against the project, but, you know, as a member of this board, I would like to know before I have to read it in the newspaper, and I, also, another housekeeping matter, Mayor, I think it'd be a good idea, you know, you've been doing this continuously as the mayor, to represent a matter of protocol and procedure for you to represent the city before any board, and with your doing that, that would not neglect the presentation of any matter that need to be presented. So, I do not recall getting in discussion at this table about that project, won't go into any great detail about it, but Mayor, if you could just put that on the agenda so we can be informed about what is the will and pleasure and desire and the vision of some of our employees, and I wanna commend them for what they do, but, but I just don't like to read it in the newspaper before it comes, before this table, I don't remember anything, not no complaint, but just, just a housekeeping matter. But do wanna thank all the nine existing department heads for what they do. And Mayor, hopefully sometime in the near future that we can find some kind of way to begin the city sewer services, and like I told the reporter with the Starville Daily News, you know, if we can get the process started, you know, that gives some satisfaction, you know. You know, we may not get to the, to the finish line as soon as we wanna get there, but I think we just need to work toward that goal, and I think that is very fair and reasonable. But Mayor, I just wanna make those few comments, and you have the floor at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And to that end, one of the things that Mr. Kemp has done at my request is to like, take a look at what projects we might be able to get to first, so we can have an order of priority on those, on those sewer projects. So, he's, he is looking at that, and we'll come back with a report to the board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from the board? I'm seeing, Alderman Vaughn?
Go back to the security cameras.
Yes, sir.
Over on West Main, is there any way that we can get the old landowners to provide their own cameras instead of we providing what we had at Fatality's over there?
Well, if I may...
Is there any way you can push them and secretly provide their own cameras for us instead of us paying for it, because it's, it's a lot of dog spots over there, and I'm thinking we need some more lighting over there, too.
Okay, Mayor, and the answer is yes, and that we certainly can get in touch with them and see. One of the things that we have been doing as a part of our DRC committee when we have new projects coming forward is asking the new apartment complexes or projects to consider putting in security cameras as a part of their project. We certainly can get in touch with the area down there, and we can certainly look at the security lighting as well to see if there are streetlights that need to be, go in there, so I'll make a note of that, and we'll visit about that tomorrow morning at the department head meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Alderman, welcome.
I just wanted to say that lend, lend support to the Starville High School Boys Basketball Team. They're playing in the semifinals for the state championship tomorrow night, I believe, and if all goes well, they'll be playing for another state championship this weekend for Starville, so good luck, Yellow Jackets, and go play home.
Absolutely. We're having a lot of sports success around here these days, so, anyone else? All right, we will now go into citizens' comments, which is an opportunity for anyone to come forward. You have three minutes to provide the board any information that you would like to do so. That is not an opportunity for the board to necessarily engage with you. This is not a back and forth conversation. This is an opportunity for you to share your thoughts with the board of Alderman, and it is a timed amount of three minutes.
All right, good evening to the men and boy. My name is Al, but, honor. Ward seven, to the mayor, to Cody Keith Nicholson, to the NACP president, Yolanda Haddick.
Thank you, sir.
At the last meeting, I, I spoke about the, a lot of people wanting worried about the rental of the sportsplex. They hearing one thing, they are, and they just like to get a understanding of what's what. Also, we are concerned about ditching the firearm in the city. It is getting to the point to where the lawmakers are making these guns so real until law enforcement and anyone here cannot determine where it's a toy or a real thing.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else who'd like to come forward?
My name is Patty Drapala, and I'm a resident of Ward Three. I come as a taxpayer to object to the purchase of the lawn mower for the parks and recreation department. I find that cost of that mower exorbitant, so I simply ask the board to reconsider your action, and if possible, rescind that action in favor of other solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drapala. Yes, ma'am, if you would give your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Topper. I am a resident here in Starville, always lived here in Starville. I feel like I am Starville, just like some of you. I reside, my home, for 17, eight, going on 18 years, has been at 26 Chalk Tower Road in the Rolling Hill subdivision, where the city sewage line backed up and flooded in our to our home. I stepped into this stuff, raw sewage. I have health issues, and having to try to clean that stuff out, trying to minimize damage. I took sick myself, my girls, my husband. We've been patient, more than patient. It's been seven months to date, seven months, still paying mortgage, still having to deal with utilities there, as well as where we reside temporarily, because we plan to get back into our home, just asking you all to reconsider taking liability for that. It wasn't nothing we've done. I love the city of Starville. I wish no harm to anyone, but I feel like someone has put their foot on my neck, and that's wrong. That is so wrong. I see a lot of my sisters and brothers in Christ in here. I mean, really, really. I just, I ask that you reconsider real soon. This has affected me, my health, our children, their education. They're taking advanced courses. This is terrible. We went through a loss, but now it looks like we've been thrown out and forgotten. Seriously, you know it takes finances to do things. Please reconsider and take liability. That's the only way we can get back into our homes unless you just, I mean, I don't know. I don't really know. But I love this, this city. I volunteer, I still volunteer. I love it. 12 years Girl Scouts, yeah, I love it. This is home for me, and all I ask you to do is reconsider what has been placed, and that's from the utilities, whoever, you know, consider. Do some soul searching. I'm, I'm praying. I love you guys, each and every one. I love when our city moves forward. I love hearing about the education. I love for my kids to hear that. I always thought I'd come before the board, talking about something for our kids, because I, I taught kids before all these things happened. All I'm asking you is to reconsider. Reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coliver. Anyone? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Good evening, Ms. Al.
We are here on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm only gonna speak briefly to thank you for your continuous support, and they're gonna take the floor from here.
Okay, if you would say your, you said your name.
Oh, my name is Kayla Outlaw. I'm a junior advisor for the board, I mean, for the Mayor's Youth Council.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jason Marberson, and we went to Oxford Friday to go to the Mayor's Youth Council Summit, and we got to learn about peer pressure, leadership skills, and just how to work in our government.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Kamai Ware, and on the summit, in my session, we learned better ways to make decisions. We also talked about ways we can staff our phone and utilize our time wisely.
Thank you. Good for, good luck with that.
Hello, I'm Alice Gray. I'm the reporter for Mayor Youth Council. We just wanna thank everybody for y'all's support, and we, we have planned cleaning up the city parks and volunteering at the nursing home and pancake breakfast that we're hosting, and we have other community service projects that we wanna do this year. Thank you.
Wonderful, and we appreciate that, too. Who else? Is that it? We don't, we don't get to hear about basketball or anything?
That's what I'm saying. Well, in summation, they did a breakout session, and they delivered and conveyed the message effectively. Mr. Corey Vine was there, and it was a nice turnout, and it was a good experience, I think, for them, and, yeah, it's...
I see a lot of head nodding back there, so that's good. Okay, great, well, thank you all for coming forward. Appreciate it. Alderman Vaughn?
It was a great section. I think all of us need to take time out and just follow them. It was a great, but y'all didn't tell the most important thing. What did, what did the doctor tell y'all to do, do what? Read, 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 read. I mean, they done a great job with their blowout and everything, and, and, you know, considering about their phones, and they had to stay off their phones so long, and then you had to go get a pull, a close pin. They had so much time, they had to stay off their phone during the section, so they done great. They done a great job. And I enjoyed myself with them. They wasn't, what everybody thinking, well, they're great kids.
I expected to be great kids, absolutely, absolutely.
I enjoyed myself.
That's wonderful, all right, well, thank you all for coming forward.
I'll be with them again, since I'm on that committee, I'll be following them again.
That's, great. We appreciate y'all. We appreciate your...
Thank you.
... Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Anyone else wishes to come forward? Ms. Isaac?
Okay. I have an outbreak. Good evening. Been gone a little while. I'm sitting out here. I can't hardly hear y'all talking. I want this system cut up a little. I can't hardly hear y'all in the speakers down on the end. So I need to hear y'all when you talk. First of all, I come to you today. I hadn't been here in a while because I had death to my family. About two weeks, two weeks and two weeks, I had death to my family. But I still would like to come today and talk about this agenda. And I know that nobody's saying nothing, and I'm gonna show everybody what I'm talking about on this agenda. The firearm. Alvin did that well. I agree with Alvin. Right now, we need to look at it. We need to look at what we're doing, what we're adding, and how we're doing it. I don't care what other country, what other town, whatever everybody else is doing. We need to look in our Kiva Hall camp to see what's going on around in our camp. I also would like to say the fire department did real good. We got EMCC, where they recognize, we ought to have Mississippi State bunch of money if we ever. We need to have them saying something, you know, and putting our people through school like this and not charging the city for it. Another thing, if y'all would just turn with me right now, I have a problem on this agenda. And it's on page four. Starkville Special Amendment requested by the Greater Starkville Development Partnership. What have you done for me lately, the partnership? But I see here you got two encampments, two encampments. I think that you give up some encampments, make us a city of what we need to do. Keith Nicholson, I would just like to say, thank you so much for requesting us for these calls. Did you see the one in Jackson? What happened to them? They stole all four times. Thank y'all for providing for me and for the other citizens here in our Kiva Hall camp, and I hope to get them calls. If you don't, I'm asking for some encampments where you can give them, okay? Because that's what we're gonna be doing. We got to consider some of this stuff. I'm looking at everybody. We got to consider some of this stuff for the city of Starkville, not for going out because this is doing and this is doing. We getting motorcycles just going up and down the road when we need to be making a safe for our children and getting something put on West Side Park so they can have something, at least something to say, "Well, I'm in the city also. I can't get over on that lane." Because they tell me it was buzzing so old up, oh, two days ago, you couldn't even get over all the sidewalks and stuff that's being put up over there. I got a call, and they said, "What you want me to do? Ask what you want me to do about it? Call your mayor?" I'm going to ask you. But if it was me, all these sidewalks and all that other stuff would be on hold until we get everything here. I stay on Rolling Hill. Everybody know why I stay. I can't get no sidewalk to roll up and down the road in my wheelchair. I fell out the other day trying to get outside to get the paper. Trying to get outside of my, you know, outside of my yard to get the paper. We need some sidewalks.
Mr. Doris, that's your three minutes.
Okay, then I'll call later, but that's all right.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Consider it. Y'all consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. You can come back next meeting. We'll give you some more time.
Yeah, I will. I called to get to you.
Thank you. You just called. We'll get you on the agenda.
All right.
All right. Anyone else for citizens' comments? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. The next thing we have on the agenda is public appearance, which is Dr. Simon Kim, who has come into town. He came in, I believe, yesterday and has been spending time with some city employees today and wandering around the city. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Well, we appreciate you being here this evening, and this was the gentleman with whom we had the Skype interview. I know Alderman Carver was unable to be there, and Vice Mayor Perkins was unable to be there. So this is an opportunity for all of us to revisit with Dr. Kim and see if there are any questions that we have of him or any further thoughts, since it's been, it's been almost a month, I believe, since we Skyped with you. It's been a while.
About four weeks.
Yes, about a month, so...
Correct.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight. Do I have any, Alderman Carver?
I just can offer you the floor for an opening statement or something. Just tell me a little bit about yourself. And I know I've spoken to some of my colleagues, and I've got a little bit of background from your resume, but...
Yeah. Thank you for asking me because I prepared it. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Alderman. I appreciate you allowing me to take this interview today. I'm a planning professional with certifications like ASAP, GISP, and SPHR. So more specifically speaking, I'm specialized in urban planning and data analysis and human resource management. I'm a professional landscape architect licensed to practice in Mississippi and Texas. So I'm good at design, build, finance, operate, and maintain site and facilities. My academic achievements include a PhD, two master's degrees, and a bachelor's degree, so I can tell that research and ideation have been part of my life. I spent the last thirty years developing leadership, and so far, I managed the planning and zoning, engineering, transportation, affordable housing programs, historic preservation, building permits and inspection, code enforcement, public health, environmental protection, shoreline management, flood plain management, economic development, tourism and event management, parks and recreation, GSIT, grant application and project management, and part of public works function. I believe that Starkville values professional planning, customer-centric services, and sustainable development. Those values seem perfectly aligned with the values I have, so that increased my application. Starkville has diligently tried to achieve the goals of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, and it's been over two years since its adoption. Implementation metrics of the plan generally aims for three-year schedule, and I believe it's the time to prepare for an evaluation and a press report on the progress of the plan. Seeing the presence of the Development Review Committee, I assume that Starkville's development services are customer-centric. In addition to the effort, I would like to offer operational benchmarking to ensure service optimization for a positive customer experience. I will also work on social and economic sustainability by offering a communication program and customer relationship management program to handle entire spectrum of stakeholder issues. Of course, I will not forget about making the codes clear, simple, and easy to understand. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Alderman Carver, did you have any questions?
I have the floor.
Is that? Okay, all right. Anyone else? Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Alderman, welcome.
Dr. Kim, thank you for being here today, and I'm assuming we had safe, easy travel to get here this time, not-
Yes, it was easy.
Like previously, so thank you for being here. Now that you've had a little bit of time to see our city and to see what we're about, why do you feel like you're the best person for this job? And is this something that you are still interested in being here and helping us have good community development in our city?
Yes, I have all the knowledge, skill sets, and abilities that you're looking for, again. And as I mentioned before, I'm specialized in urban planning and data analysis and the human resource management. I believe that's what you're looking for. I can manage the team members and coordinate them to produce a better result. And also, I have technical knowledge about urban planning. I got a PhD on that, and I'm also ASAP certified planner. So I can be the technical advisor and a liaison for the board and committees. And also, I've been working with the development communities in the past, and I know how to lead them and how to find the right location for them to provide the right businesses. So I can work with them. That's also, I believe, one of the values you are looking for. And also, as a community development director, I would like to work with the public and provide transparent and accountable and fair services. I would like to provide those to them and get their trust.
I just have one more. You had mentioned the Comprehensive Plan adoption in 2016, and as we're approaching that sort of that three-year benchmark, where do we stand on that? The current city staff has been working diligently for the last several months on the code rewrite that's associated with that Comprehensive Plan. If you were to offer this job, they're sort of, I would say, midstream in where that is. Certainly, we would be looking to value your input and try to guide that to something that can be presented before this board and hopefully be adopted in the very near future to see where we are in that program. I know we've made good strides on that, but to come in with a set of outside objective eyes to see how can we make sure that our code rewrite is aligning with our Comprehensive Plan to make sure that we move our city forward for the next foreseeable future. I believe that is going to be one of, that would be my expectation, along with good customer service that you're talking about. And how do we... I'm looking for somebody to have a vision and to manage that community development department. I think we have very good staff.
Sure, sure.
I think we have very good staff. I think now what we need is some good leadership to be able to really help continue the growth that we've seen. I would say by most standards in the state of Mississippi, Starkville, we're not the biggest city out there, but certainly by Mississippi standards and I think by Starkville standards, we are seeing unprecedented growth that we haven't seen maybe in a very long time. We're hopeful that that growth is going to continue to happen. But we want to make sure that we're mindful, that we have policies and procedures in place to make sure that the end result of that is quality growth that's going to make our city better. And I'm looking for somebody to help lead and direct that ship on a day-to-day basis in concert with the mayor and the other department heads to make sure that the products that we're getting and the development that we get is going to be something that future citizens can be proud of.
Yes.
Not that every project, none of them are, but that's the charge that I'm looking for, for somebody that's going to come in and take the mantle with a good quality staff, and how do you begin to mentor and develop that staff and to make sure that we are in a position to be as successful as we could be. Do you feel like you're the person to handle it?
Thank you. I will do that.
Any other questions from anyone? I'm interested in your impression of Starkville, since you, and I don't have any idea where you drove around. You were sort of, I don't know if you were on your own. I know you had an escort for a little bit of the day. But did you have any particular impression, something that struck you about Starkville in particular?
Yes, very nice people. First, I met staff members, and they are really indeed very nice in character, and they have a lot of good technical knowledge, and they are willing to work together. That impressed me a lot. And second, when we go out and went out and looked around, I saw some really nice, good developments that actually enhance the quality of the city, aesthetics. So I would like to keep on going with that direction.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Miller?
Dr. Kim, thank you for being here tonight, and good to see you in person.
Yes.
I'm Patrick Miller. I'm the Alderman from Ward Five. So good to shake your hand tonight. I guess a question for you, and just out of curiosity, I was curious about your impression of Starkville. But now that you've had, obviously, you've gone through the first interview, you've had a little bit of time to study Starkville, I'm sure, and go through the Community Development Department and just look at where we are as a city. And you're assessing the city of Starkville and where our Community Development Department is now. Just, do you see any gaps in services or things that can improve within our Community Development Department or...
I haven't done any benchmarking or analysis with their performance itself, so it is really hard to tell what needs to be improved. But I saw there was, there is a Community Development Coordinator, which is a one-stop shop, I guess. And also, I saw the Development Review Committee working on, which is the concept, not a concept, is a functional program that has been run by several municipalities in the past. And I started working at the DRC since 2003 at the city of Deltona, and I'm pretty much on it, and that actually clears the path of the review. So that was working on. So my initial perception on this would be the first, make the clear code, clear and refined code, and streamline the process. If there is any process that lags development, we probably need to streamline it. And I think I can sit with other staff members and do the process mapping and find if there are any, anywhere there is a lagging, the process that we need to eliminate. So I will work on it. But right now, it's hard to tell what's going on.
And that was a good answer. And as, you know, that was probably a tough question, because my thoughts always on a new position, or it really takes almost a whole year to really get a full assessment of how everything goes within a department or whatever the position might be. So usually after a year, typically, you can kind of evaluate, all right, I've been through this one year. What does it look like? You know, how can we improve? So I'll follow that up with a second question. So just really, you know, like first hundred days, what do you think, you're gonna, you know, get here at City Hall? What are gonna be some of the first things that you want to do as Department Head?
I would like to check on the projects that has not been done in the past.
Okay.
And if I can provide any alternative solutions to it. Any controversial issues that is on, I'd like to sit with critics. I believe a lot of critics out there, and I'd like to sit with them. It is not necessary, I can provide them solutions to them directly, but I'd like to learn about those critics and find if I can help them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's bringing other thoughts? No? No one? All right. Is there anything, the last thing you'd like to say, Dr. Kim?
Yes, closing comments. I prepared it. I hope you will see that I have qualities to lead teams to make Starkville the best place to live, work, and play in the United States. Through my academic achievements and practical experiences, I can proudly tell that I have knowledge, skill sets, and abilities in a top sister as a technical advisor and a liaison. So far, I have successfully assisted local governments formulating their visions, adopting comprehensive plans, setting strategic plans, deploying subsequent policies, aligning tactical and operational goals, and evaluating their work progress while refining the original visions. It is my intent to assist you better at Starkville because I would like to make you a home. I understand that this position has critical roles in providing social, economic, and environmental sustainability for long-term sound developments throughout the city. To take on such roles, I will make sure that the community goals are achieved by having my team members listen to others, provide accurate information and service, serve them fairly, and provide them positive experiences. This is an exciting opportunity. I really want to join the efforts to make a real difference at a rising metropolitan area. Thank you for having me today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kim. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the consideration of amending the Starkville Ordinance Section 82-6 relating to the discharge of firearms to align with State Statute 45-9-53. And I'm going to start with asking Mr. Latimer to provide us some background.
Board, again, what this ordinance would do, this amendment, if passed tonight, would align Starkville's firearm ordinance with the rights and privileges that are allowed under State Statute. So to clarify, from the last meeting, there was never any doubt or question whether the city could enact this amendment. It's whether that amendment was absolutely compulsory under the State Statute. Vice Mayor Perkins raised a very incisive question based on the language of the statute. The statute says that a municipality may not apply a regulation in annex territory if the shooter is shooting a shotgun, air rifle, BB gun, bow and arrow on ten acres or more, more than 150 feet away from residences or occupied buildings, and in a manner not reasonably expected to cause the projectile to cross the boundary. Likewise, the city may not regulate in annex territory against a shooter who's shooting a centerfire or rimfire rifle or pistol fifty acres or more, more than 300 feet away from a residence or occupied building, and in a manner not reasonably expected to cause the projectile to cross the boundary. So the issue was with the word "may." The word "may" is normally a discretionary term under State Statute, but under this statute, it read like a mandatory term or a compulsory term. So we reached out to the AG's office for guidance. So before the last board meeting, we put in a call to the AG's office, and we received a call back Wednesday morning after the board meeting. And I talked to Ricky Luke, who is an attorney in the AG's office and who has assigned the gun questions, the gun cases, and writes the gun opinions. gun questions, the gun cases, and writes the gun opinions. And he says, despite the word "may," they construe the statute to be mandatory and compulsory. That was his opinion. He said that the word "may" is the way to read the statute and in the context of the statute, have the statute make sense. I tend to agree with that opinion because if the statute is read any other way, then it's stripped of its meaning with respect to what's allowed in the annexed territory. So again, all this does is it allows our ordinance to align with what is allowed under state statute. Having said all that, the municipality isn't bound to do this tonight. It's still up to you whether you want it to align. If it doesn't align, there's a chance where enforcement may occur against somebody in annexed territory and they challenge that enforcement based on the state statute. And this amendment would undercut any time or expense allowed in defending that type of challenge and make them consistent.
And just, are you done?
I am.
Okay. And just to add to that, this was passed, this particular statute was passed in 1982. And so it would also impact our 1998 annexed territory and any new territory that we annex. So it, I have looked to draw a map so that we'll have knowledge, assuming the board wants to, wants it to align and our police are in need of enforcement, they will know where it's appropriate and where not appropriate based on the statute. So just from a mapping standpoint. Okay, discussion from the board before we open it as a public hearing. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, thank you so very much for your report and thank you for further recognizing that it's a very valid concern to arrive at the proper legal interpretation. Just one question I have for you, Attorney, and thank you for all your diligent work and, and listened to you very carefully. I understand that you had received a call from the attorney who signed, who is assigned to this particular area. He gave you a verbal opinion. The only question that I have for you is, do you have any case law from the Mississippi Supreme Court or the Mississippi Court of Appeals and/or any official attorney general's opinion that supports the verbal interpretation that you received from this one single lawyer in the state of Mississippi who gave this interpretation on behalf of the attorney general's office?
No, sir. I've researched those and I don't believe they exist.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions before I open it for a public hearing?
I'll come back to closing remarks.
Okay, all right, all right. Seeing none, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak for or against this particular ordinance amendment now would be the time to do so.
Good evening to the mayor and board. My name is Alvin Turner. Seventeen years ago, I came to Starville and mom was kind of glad because I couldn't shoot 38 Smith and Wesson in the city. It's so glad that I had to retire my 38 because of the ordinance that you can't discharge firearm in the city. We're getting to the point where we've been blessed that our people hadn't started killing people in Starville. But we hear it all around other places. And if we don't use common sense, and they start killing here because of our what we feel and what we think. Our children already, they think it's foreign to point target guns at people. And then when they get repercussion, everybody mad with everybody. We doing all right. All right, to open up a can of worms and we have to suffer the consequences. All right, all right, that's, that's not right and it's not fair to the law enforcement to have dogs, bullets that, and we have dogs, bullets. If we doing all right, because once, once it gets started, the fight hard stop once it gets started. So let's know if, if we doing all right, to our safety, it best to, to let sleeping dogs live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Very good point, Ms. Alvin. From the start, I didn't get it, no way, I am. We everybody know who I am. The only thing that I have with this, with this coming up, it was about to discharge the firearm, target gun, BB gun. No child was going to sit here and say, okay, I got one, two, three, and then I'm shooting. I built a child before I had BB guns. I was a tall boy and I used to shoot them. When it was time, I used to shoot them. We used to shoot green apple about three. We used to shoot anything that was down. We didn't count where we were going. A lot of these on that's coming up, all of these coming up, it's going to be on account of the parents. And it's going to be ones that shot out, going to be other things shot out. We don't know who stay in the woods. We got people that stay in the woods, that's on. We don't know. I just want to make it safe. And I'm just going to say, I'm not for it. May change, but I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvin. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Ronnie Wofford, Ward Five.
Mr. Wofford.
First, I'd like to clarify what the question was made last time with the city attorney. I think he talked to Mr. Little about the actual law when the county, if this would be, I would be under the same ordinance that I am currently under. I disagree. I'm not attorney, a lot of research. And the reason I disagree, I say I have a broader allowance in the county based on ordinance 45-9-57, which is, I just want to show what I'm under right now currently. This is my opinion. I'm not a lawyer, like you say, but under that 49, 45-9-57, it says, a county may regulate the discharge of any firearm or weapon other than a BB gun within any platted subdivision. However, no county may prohibit the discharge of any firearm or weapon on land if such firearm or weapon is discharged in a manner not reasonably expected to cause a projectile from such firearm or weapon to travel across any property line without permission of the property owner. You may have to give attorney general opinion on that, but it has nothing to do with the city on there. I'm just trying to point out the, what regulations that I believe I'm under at this current point. I think the other one is more of a minimum, but like I say, I'm not an attorney. As you know, I'm for this, but it won't affect me unless the next process is done, which is annexation, which would have to be approved, would have to get through the court, and would have to overcome any lawsuits if there is any that comes up. In doing this, I'm here based on the assumption that if that happens, I'm trying to understand this. And I did not create the situation if it is approved, the city encroached on me. I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I'm doing just fine out there now. The weapons, I'm not out there, and I can only speak for me on my 37 acres. And it's not like I discharge weapons multiple, multiple times this and the other. I'm trying to keep the rights. If this is approved, even with the minimum standards here, you know, I made a considerable investment on the land four years ago, and I do have weapons, everything, and I have several weapons that would have to sit in my closet that I couldn't ever even use anymore. I would hope any approval of this would at least approve this, but I would also like to expand it to keep what rights you do have on the property, whether it be board ordinance, expanding the ordinance at some point. I know tonight is probably just for this one ordinance. And/or I know there's, just like any zoning, any people building these big projects, there's always variance that they come in and ask, I need a variance. At some point in time, it could be if this is approved or whatever, that you look at it a case-by-case basis on a person who has 37 acres, a variance allowed due a little more than the current minimum standard. Because based on the ordinance that was quoted, then I would still be locked in with somebody, a small piece of property right next to me because I'm not encroached all the way around my property when the annex is in. I'm only on one side. So I'm closed in with other people, which would give them more rights than me right across a barbed wire fence. So I'm definitely for this. I would still like to see it expanded and hopefully that'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wofford. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it as a public hearing, and we will go back to any discussion from the board as it relates to this public hearing.
I got a couple of questions. Just say if a person got one acre and one got 30 acres. So the one with the one acre won't be qualified to shoot on his property, right?
I'm assuming you're asking, Mr. Latimer?
Person with one acre and one with 10 acres, would the one with one acre be, have the same rights that the one with the 30 acres have to shoot on his property?
Not in annexed territory. You would have to have 10 acres to shoot.
Can we shoot fireworks in the city limit without a permission, without a permit?
I believe our ordinance says no.
But you gonna tell me, we're gonna sit here and want to pass, shoot guns at the city limit, but you cannot shoot fireworks in the city limit without a permit? I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe this is what we trying to do. The man got one acre. His one acre just more important to him with one with 30 acres, or 10 acres. It's just important to him. If he feel like, you can allow a man to shoot in the city limit with 10 acres, why he can't shoot in the city limit with one acre? Because if you get the end of the 10 acre, give me a gun. I'm gonna hit that man at the end of 10 acres just like I'm hitting the one in one acre. So what, I mean, it's confusion here. It's a conflict. So in other words, we giving, we giving a person with more property favor over the person with lesser property. But I still can't shoot a firework in the city limit. But you gonna allow these people to shoot guns in the city limit?
Alderman, Sistrunk, am I seeing your hand?
I think you, I think you are. And I believe that this section calls for a public hearing on considering the ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Can I make a motion?
You certainly may.
I'd like to first clarify with the city attorney, please. By adding this language to our ordinance, we are in no way conveying any rights that someone does not currently have under state statute. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
All we're doing is aligning our ordinance language with state statute and offering some clarity for Starville police should there become an enforcement issue. I think it's important that we go ahead and get this out of the way because it arose as part of the annexation discussions, and it will, it will simply continue to sort of muddy the water as far as annexation goes if, if we do not act on it. So I'm going to make a motion to amend Starville ordinance section 82-6 relating to the discharge of firearms to align with state statute 45-9-53.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Miller. All right, further discussion. Further discussion. All right, seeing none, what we'll do is we'll do a roll call vote on this one. If you would, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alder, excuse me, Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Okay, thank you. By vote of five to two, the motion carries. All right, moving along, we have under mayor's business. This is, this is an item that came up actually after our work session on Friday, and it relates to a meeting that I, Mr. Latimer and I had with president or supervisor trainer and Representative Robertson. And the suggestion was that by Representative Robertson, as well as their, as well as the attorney of the county supervisors, that we perhaps might be successful if we were to seek some appropriation assistance from the Mississippi Legislature for the remediation and closing costs of the landfill. And so this was crafted after we had that meeting, so it did not make it to the agenda originally, but you still should have had it, I think, in the e-packet and then in, in the paper packets as well. I believe Ms. Harden got them in there. This is a hail Mary, for want of a better expression, and we may or may not be successful, but it certainly would be nice if we were able to get some. We are doing it as a joint resolution or resolution of both the county and the city, and with any luck at all, even if we got just a little bit, it would certainly defray some of those costs. So that's the reason it is late. I apologize for that. I tried not to do that, but in this case, I thought it was certainly worth making that attempt. So that's the background on it. Do I have any questions?
Mayor, I move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, under board business, we have the, well, we've already taken care of that. We did that under the public hearing element, so that has been, that has been handled. And next, under item B, we have discussion and consideration of hiring the community development director. I think in your package, you have the paperwork that was provided by Mr. Ashford regarding the position and the salary structure. Alderman Miller.
Move approval.
I have a motion for approval from Alderman Miller. Do I have a second? Any details to go with that, Alderman Miller?
I guess I'd like to move approval with the staff recommendation from?
Okay.
The community resource director.
Okay. All right, do we have, do I have a second? Waiting on a second. In need of a second in order to continue.
Salary, mayor.
Well, that's, and?
I withdraw, mayor.
Okay, withdraw, withdraw, okay. All right, do we have, do you have, Alderman Walker?
Mayor, I move approval that we hire, make an offer to Dr. Kim, community development director, with a starting salary of $88,500. Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Walker for a starting salary, hiring Dr. Kim, starting salary of 88,500. I have a second from Alderman Miller. Further discussion. Alderman Sistrunk.
Would you clarify the probationary period for and for Dr. Kim?
Under normal circumstances, I believe we have, well, it's what Alderman Walker would like with his motion.
Yeah, I would say typically it was followed by the, our handbook.
Okay. Okay. All right, anything further? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, mayor. I certainly want to appreciate the board for working toward trying to bring someone that the board is of the opinion that may be the proper and best choice for this very important position. This position has been vacant since on about maybe August or September of last year. We have seven full-time employees in this department, to my recollection. It appears that this department has been running very well, in my opinion, in the absence of a community development director. The seven full-time employees, as I understand it, are recalled from prior board actions, or the city planner, the assistant city planner, the community development administrator, the co-compliance officer, two building inspectors, and one building official. Certainly, the applicant, in my opinion, possesses some very respectful credentials and qualifications. Master's degree, very important. Of course, I have a master's, who else, a PhD, that's very commendable about his credentials. I appreciate his presence, his interest in the city of Starville. I'm going to respectfully dissent and oppose to this, to this hiring because I'm going to give it a two-part test. The applicant is seemingly possessed with the credentials to perhaps to be a director that may promote the best interests of Starville, but given my almost 26 years on this board, you know, time will tell. you know, time will tell. Do not want to just be very speculative here. The second part of the test is that I oppose the, the entry level salary. In my almost twenty-six years here, I do not recall any entry level department head being paid, I think Mayor's eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. That's correct, right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do not recall any entry level department head making that much money. This particular individual, if hired, will become the third highest department head for the city of Starkville. Of the nine that we have currently, prior to this hire, five of those department heads came up through the ranks. They have labored long and hard to reach the plateau where they now are situated. We have department heads who have been here for decades and who have not reached this level of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. This salary, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars is, is, is within touching distance of our second highest paid department head. As a matter of fact, the second highest paid department head only makes less than a thousand dollars more than what this particular applicant will make. I must respectfully say that the fair, and just calling it straight as I need to call it, but no disrespect, I'm just talking about the, the salary aspect. The salary is not fair when we talk about salaries at the department head level. This salary is not fair. It is not equitable. It is not fair to even the two highest paid department heads who have labored long and hard. And one of the two highest paid department heads came back, came during the two thousand and five and the two thousand and nine term that was, came in at a salary of roughly seventy thousand dollars and came in with, with very impressive credentials. And, and now only making just barely, well, not a thousand dollars more than this proposed salary. The second highest department head at this time for the city of Starkville is not making, did not make that kind of money when he was hired. And the highest paid department head for the city of Starkville had to start at a much lower salary than is being proposed for this particular individual. This salary is, is high and excessive and, and it's not one that's provided justice because we have three department heads who have worked, labored long and hard, who are making less than seventy thousand dollars. The salary of this particular individual is at least twenty-two thousand dollars more than one of the lowest department heads. This salary is about another twenty-two thousand dollars lower than another department head because two of the three department heads about, maybe about nine hundred dollars apart. The next department head who's under seventy thousand dollars is gonna be at least about twenty thousand dollars less than this proposed salary. Is this fair and equitable? No, it's not. I understand and respect the credentials, but we have a city planner, an assistant city planner who's been running this department, in my opinion, based upon my observations, and Alderman and the Vice Mayor have done a good job running this department. They have been engaged in a code rewrite, and this is only a seven-person department. I mean, the mayor is our representative for, for the Golden Triangle Partnership Planning and Development Board. She's our representative, and you know, she's making appearances, trying to promote and recruit and bring industry to Starkville, so we're not lacking in that category. I mean, industries are still coming to Starkville. You know, I think he should get, whoever it is, if it's John Doe, Mary Doe, Bob Doe, they should get paid well. But you know, let's promote equity. Let's promote fairness at the department head level. I mean, I do not recall any other department head in my almost twenty-six years coming in at eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Even the second highest paid department head's been here since the two thousand and five to two thousand and nine term, maybe came during the middle of that term about twelve years ago. So I want to make sure that we're fair to all the department heads. And, and, and we got a lot of department heads who started much lower. We got one department head now who started under fifty thousand dollars as an employee, and, and others who, who started much lower. We, you know, it just, just no reasonable explanation, in my opinion, to just to start this person this high, and then, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to raise the ceiling for this salary. The range of this salary is seventy-eight thousand dollars a minimum. The highest range for this salary, to my recollection, is approved by majority of this board, and just, just, just nothing against anybody, just to take my time to talk. The, the highest range for this salary is roughly ninety-eight thousand and four hundred dollars. So you know, within about a couple of years, with the raise, you know, we're gonna be pushing a hundred thousand dollars plus, plus these good benefits we provide, like retirement, social security, because we provide some good city benefits, medical insurance, health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance. And, you know, I think that we just gonna have to be a better steward of the taxpayer dollars when you're only supervising seven people, and these are not inexperienced staff members. We got a city planner who's experienced, running the department, assistant city planner helping run the department, and we have a co-compliance officer who's been with the city for a long time. We have the Community Development Administrator. We have the, the two building inspectors who obviously are doing a good job. I never hear anything negative about anything. They, businesses are steady coming in. There's, there's growth all over this city, and we have a building official, so you know, and, and certainly last but not least here is that we have three department heads who making less than seventy thousand dollars, and here we have a motion approved for this department head to get eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, only eleven thousand, five hundred dollars short of a hundred, hundred thousand dollars. That's a good and excellent and a very superior salary when you're only supervising seven people, seven full-time people. That's a good job. And plus, when you have great seven peoples, I understand, are very competent in their job. I mean, these, and, and, and I just have to take the time to say what is right and give, give flowers while I can give flowers for people that, who I'm giving the flowers to can hear the, can receive the flowers. Because the current staff, the, since the last director's been gone, we've had the planner to come here, we had the assistant planner, everything that this board asks, and then even some, they come down here and do their job. They're involved with the code rewrite. They've been spending time after time and hours after hour. They come here with these rezoning, they be at the planning and zoning, they be at the tree advisory board, they be at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, they be at all these boards, doing their job. And here, and they gonna be the one, in my opinion, doing the work anyway. Because that's their way they're trained. That's just their background. We have, actually, we have two city planners. They just have different job titles. We have a, Mr., we have the planner and the, and the assistant. They, they work in concert with one another. You can tell it's demonstrated in their walk, it's demonstrated in their actions when they come here. They fulfill their duties with enthusiasm, with, with, with passion, with interest, and with pride. And when they come here and give, you read these, take your time and read these reports that they give. Every time you get a report from, from the planner, assistant planner, it details the law, it details the facts, it details the findings, it detail the conclusion, it detail the recommendations, and it tells you everything you need to know. If you just read that report thoroughly, and if you read it thorough enough, and if you just read it and understand it before you get here, you know the case. Because that is the, the backbone of making our jobs easy and for us to be successful in what we do. And I want to thank them for what they have, have done, and we have not, and I have not extended appreciation enough to Mr. City Planner and Assistant City Planner. They've done a very miraculous job and have to sit through these zoning issues and all those related matters. So with all those things being said, I think the salary, you know, is, is rather extensive, and of course, I'm sure the votes are there to do it, but, but you know, we still have to represent and do our jobs and speak to what we write, and of course, we disagree, but that's not gonna change my opinion about how I feel about it. But in, in finality here, when the board passed this motion tonight, the board needs to come back at some point and give equity at least to these three people who are making less than seventy thousand dollars. You have two employees, two department heads making between six to six and six to seven thousand dollars, and you got a motion on the floor to pay somebody eighty-eight five. Got one department head making roughly six to eight thousand dollars. And this eighty-eight five, that's, is that fairness? No. Is that justice? No. Is that equity? No. Now, that's no disrespect for the qualification. I'm just talking about the money. I mean, we just see it different. You know, that's what America's all about. We just have different views. That's what makes this board so great. We just have different opinions. So I just wanted to take the time of, to say that, and I want to thank the existing staff, what they're doing, and, and you know, I don't, you know, as to industries coming in, you know, the mayor, she represents us at the partnership. She goes to all the, the community events. She has high visibility. She's the current, she's in the community. She's, she's connected out there, so she's, you know, that's, that's rolling, that's happening. So I mean, I'm just trying to see in regard to some of the, my colleagues' questions, the gentleman from five and gentleman from four, I want to see what's gonna roll on in here. And, and so, you know, I, I don't want to pass any judgment. I'm just gonna see, if when this motion passes, I just want to make sure that, you know, we, the board pay eighty-eight thousand, five hundred on a majority vote, they'll get our money's worth. So, but again, it's just not fair to all our other department heads, and, and it's just too close on their heels, and many of these, and, and of the nine department heads we have now, five of them came through the ranks. They had to work hard to get just where they are. And as to the ones that came into the ranks, neither one of those that came, neither one of the five who just started off are not at that eighty-eight five. The ones that are above this eighty-five are those who came in at the department head level, and there's only two above eighty-five, they came in at the department head level, but those who did not come in the department head level, they're gonna be making less, less than eighty-five. The five employees who came through the ranks are making less than eighty-five. So that's the, that's the lack of fairness about this. And the credentials, yes, you know, got some very good credentials, but you know, I mean, I, these credentials, you know, this, the salary's still high, in my opinion. So I think, you know, we're very fortunate to have, you know, a good candidate, but at the same time, I think the board can pay a lesser salary. So Mayor, I just want to say all the things very respectfully, is I always make it real clear, and nothing negative about toward anybody, anyone. You know, the Vice Mayor has been at this for twenty-six years almost now. I just want to do what I do and just speak to it, and, and no disrespect to anyone, and appreciate the applicant, but I wanted to say all this and so everybody can, can hear what, what has been said. So I just yield the floor, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone, Alderman Sistrunk?
I, I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments. I do. I, I would like to remind everybody that within the last year, we've done a complete review of our payroll here in the city of Starkville, and with the, the help of this board, gotten everybody to a market level pay, pay rate. So we have, we have looked at and addressed that within the last year. This is a new position, and I believe that what's being recommended tonight is probably the market rate for this position, this candidate. The other thing I'd like to, to, to say, just, just to keep everybody focused on, on things here, is that not all jobs are created equal. And this is not, this is not a matter of fairness or making sure that people are paid equitably. We have attempted to address the equitable pay issue when we, when we went through that salary review within the last year. I'm sure that even within the Vice Mayor's profession, that you will find attorneys who charge different hourly rates. That's gonna vary with experience and the area that they work in, and the area being the, the field of law that they work in, and, and that just, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that all jobs are not created equal. All department heads do not do exactly the same work. And I do think we have made every effort to pay market salaries, and I, I believe that this recommendation is, is unfortunately for those of us that are trying to find the dollars to pay for these things, the market rate.
Thank you, Alderman Sistrunk. Alderman Walker?
Just wanna say, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think we have excellent, very good city staff in, in all of our departments, and we're trying to find a way to, to get better. And I just want to confirm from the Human Resources Director that the salary range for this position was seventy-eight thousand to ninety-eight thousand. Is that correct? And this number is, is somewhere, I would say, in the middle between those, the low and the, the high range. And the reason I came to that, that number was, while this is a person who's coming in to be a new department head for the city of Starkville, this is a candidate who has years, years of experience running departments in other cities. And I think, so it's, while it's an entry level to us, I think this, the, the experience of this candidate, I think warrants the, that middle range as opposed to being at the very low range. And I, I agree that this is a professional position, and that is the market rate, and I, I certainly think that we should all continue to try to find ways to increase the salaries for all our employees that do really good work. And I think that's part of our job to figure out how do we, how do we do that. So I take the, the Vice Mayor's comments as, as constructive and think that we need to do that, and, but at this point, I think this is based on what the Human Resources Director has provided to us in terms of the salary range and the experience of this candidate. I feel comfortable with this recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman. Anything for Alderman Miller?
Mayor, thank you. I, I do think it's a good conversation to have anytime that we talk about salaries and the ability to appropriately pay our department heads or any employee of the city of Starkville. It is, it is a lot of money, but we make a lot of big decisions based on a lot of money up here. And I wanted to ask the Human Resource Director, do you, do you, as a foundation, do you pull these salary ranges from the Stennis Institute of Government?
Before you answer that, and I'm, go ahead and come up here so we can hear the response, please.
I do. I pulled the Stennis Institute survey that we got approximately two years ago, and then what I do is I minimize it, surrounding cities like Oxford, Tupelo, Columbus, Auburn, you know, places like that, and they kind of do single study based on location as well.
Right, and so part of, part of that study is that it provides an objective measurement of what the market rate is to pay
Yes, sir.
Public employees.
Yes, sir.
Correct? So really, we base it off of that?
We
In terms of being equitable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
I've got a question for you before you leave.
What, Alderman, who has the floor?
I'll yield.
Alderman Carver, go ahead.
One thing I'd say when, when this figure, I, I guess, were any discussions made with this candidate from anybody on this board or someone that, is this a figure that was made internally just between yourself and someone on this board, or who came up with this figure, just?
You mean eighty-eight five?
Right.
Alderman Walker?
I would say I did it right here. I took seventy-eight, ninety-eight, and I did an average, and added five hundred dollars.
I mean, why not seventy-eight? I mean, this, it seems excessive to me because, and it's nothing with anything to do with the candidate, but previous gentleman, was he making seventy-eight on his outgoing?
He was, yes, sir.
And just from a cost saving standpoint, and, and if no discussions been made with the candidate, then, you know, I'm, I'm asking, what, what, where's the, is that general practice, just to draw on the middle and?
His experience? Well, I, I don't know his thought process about it, but when I post the position, the range was from seventy-eight to ninety-eight, so you have to take a look in consideration of what the job is, his experience, and the duties that he'll be serving, and so I'm assuming that's what he based his eighty-eight five off of.
Do you?
Do you second that opinion?
It's within the range with his experience of, yes.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Miller, will you?
Yeah, thank you. I think sometimes, well, I just wanted to make the statement that I, I do think that, I agree with Alderman Sistrunk that we, we do our best to make equitable decisions about what we pay folks up here. And we certainly try and do it from an objective standpoint and involving the Stennis Institute of Government and the ways in which they measure it. And also too, I think it's important to consider, we're all going to have different, I think, somewhat different philosophies on, on what people should be paid. There's seven of us up here that make these decisions. But I also think we have to consider too that, you know, in public budgeting, budgets grow incrementally over time. So what our budget looks like from fifteen years ago looks completely different in 2019. And when we're able to grow the budget incrementally, which is certainly one of my goals up here, comes more services for the city of Starkville. And with more services comes more, or the need for more professional expertise. And so with that comes with hiring extremely qualified and, in my opinion, prestigious employees. And I, I think we have that across the board here in the city of Starkville, and I'm personally looking forward to adding to that. I think to the question of eighty-eight thousand five hundred compared to seventy-eight thousand five hundred. And hiring, my philosophy would be, I don't know that I would want to pay somebody with a PhD, two master's degrees. I think thirty years of experience or if not almost thirty years of experience and running some departments in some fairly large cities, the minimum of our salary range. That's just my personal philosophy. I think it's appropriate and a good thought process to perhaps meet somewhere in the middle. And I also think too that it's important that we do pay folks and, and, and we pay them as, as much as we can because I want to have the best, I've said this before, I want to have the best department heads in the state of Mississippi. And, and right now, I have a lot of faith in that. We have a good team here in the city of Starkville, and I think tonight's a good addition. And what comes with that though is having to pay people and having to pay them more as, as we progress over time. I think if you look at the Board of Aldermen, our salaries, in my understanding, fifteen years ago have, I think, almost doubled, is my understanding.
More than that?
More than double on the Board of Aldermen, our salaries. So, you know, and I think that's, I really, honestly, that, that brings hopefully a higher quality candidate to run for public office, to run for mayor. You're seeing it across the board in the city of Starkville, and I think you're going to continue to see it as our budget grows incrementally and as we provide more services to the city of Starkville, we're going to pay candidates or our department heads even more. And so comparing that to twelve or fifteen years ago, in my opinion, and respectfully, is a big, is a big leap in looking at our budget, you know, from fifteen years ago to where it is in 2019. So those are just some things to consider, in my opinion. But I do think it's a good conversation. I'm glad we, we brought it up, and I'm glad that we have differences in opinion. Like I said, I think we're all going to have a different philosophy on, on how we should pay people. So I think it's important. With that being said, in, in comments about Dr. Kim, I, I think, because we've been focused a lot on the salary, and I'm, I plan on supporting the salary fully, I'm, I'm excited to have you, Dr. Kim. I think you did a wonderful job in your Skype interview. It's been a pleasure meeting you tonight. I'm looking forward to hopefully, you know, after tonight, hopefully spending some more time with you. I, I think you, like I, like I said, a very prestigious background, very experienced, and I think as the vice mayor discussed and agree with Alderman Walker, you are going to inherit a fantastic staff. That's my opinion, but I, I work specifically, I spend personally a lot of my time communicating with the city planner and the assistant city planner, and they do an absolutely wonderful job. I can't speak highly enough of those two employees. And of course, the rest of the department does a wonderful job as well. So I, I think you've given a great interview. You've got a ton of expertise. I think in terms of where the city's heading, both in, you know, for, in community economic development, you will be a huge asset in allowing us to assess, you know, where we've been, where we're at, and, and where we need to head appropriately. So you have my support tonight, both the, both the salary and for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
I tried to stay out of the wall. There's one wall I didn't want to get in. But we're sitting talking about salaries. I see what we gave our sanitation, our sanitation, ten dollars a hour, and we turned back around and took it back. But we're talking about salary. We can take this to eighty-eight-five and the ten dollars an hour that we giving them, we took it back with the deductible. Them guys got to work ten paychecks to meet their deductible if they kept the three thousand dollar deductible. How is this fair? How is this fair? You took back what you gave them employees. We took it all back, saying they wasn't using it. How is this fair? I got upset because last week when it rained, I came behind them, they on the back of the truck in the rain. I was upset to see what we done. We took their deductible from them. We gave them a raise and took it back. But you gonna tell me, nothing gets you, Dr. Kim, as it gets this city of Starkville the way we doing our own employee in the house? That's not fair. We took their, we took their deductible. We took their, their salary that we gave them. We increased it and took it right back from them with the deductible when they had free and they riding in the rain, sleet, and snow. They got to go. Come on, peoples. Come on, y'all. I yield, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Without any further discussion, if Alderman Carver?
I'll say, I'll just say, a side note to say this is that the breadth of the candidates that we've gotten over the last ten years I've been on the board has been expanding like in the last few positions that we've filled, we've had individuals from other states, other countries. That's interesting to see from a small town in Mississippi, to start seeing individuals come from all over the world and to show interest. And that's exciting. So something's got to be drawing somebody from a website or something from a hiring process to understand what's going on here and to show interest. I will go with this, with this motion tonight, just, and I had those questions for Alderman Walker and Mr. Ashford to understand where we're at. I do think that this conversation needs to carry with the vice mayor's remarks. In the last ten years, there's been significant strides from the bottom up with more work to be done, but significant strides from employee pay scale. I would agree, everybody on the board probably agrees with that. But the work's not done. Anytime you start discussing employees, which are our greatest asset as a city, and anytime you know them personally, you know their families, and you know their pay scale, then, then it gets personal. And it should because that's our greatest asset. But I will support this tonight, but with the intention and understanding that we're going to have to discuss more of those department heads. If, I would like to work with y'all personally with the, with the remaining department heads and the five, I believe, that were mentioned. I'm going to let you interrupt me in a second. If there's anything, any kind of work to be done and left to be done, I'd like to address that, so. I yield the floor.
All right. Alderman Sistrunk?
And, and I'm very glad to have these discussions about salaries, department heads and employees from, from department heads to our newest and, and most recent hires. I hope, because we're going to be going into the budget process in just a couple of months, and I hope that y'all will remember this, and when, when it comes time to fund additional pay for employees, that, that you're willing to step up and do what's going to be needed to make those sorts of increases. And I think y'all know what I'm saying, but not saying. So we, we will, it will require additional funds, and we will have to balance that against other things that we want to do in the city. But I am, I want us, we've got our salaries in, in line. I want us to keep them there. I want us to continue to be able to recruit and retain the very best employees that we can. So in May, when it's time to talk budget, I've duly noted who, who supports the idea of additional pay for our employees.
All right.
The hard discussion on budgets, and I think everybody up here and everybody in the room agrees, when you do individual hires like department heads, it, it really shines a light and highlights on a, on an individual salary. What's the hard part is when you've got to try to grab a whole department and figure out how to increase everybody's standard of living and quality of life. So I do understand what I think what you're saying, but department head hires again shine a light on individual salary and they definitely shine into a larger group. And you, you know, we've gone a long way, but to give an entire department a raise is much, much harder than one individual. So I agree with you.
Thank you. Please, we're there? All right. Motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right. Next item is the resolution regarding the authorizing and directing issuance of negotiable interest-bearing water and sewer system revenue bonds.
Mayor, I move approval.
A motion for approval from Alderman Walker. I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion. Alderman Vaughn?
Mayor, what would all this be earmarked to go? What areas, do we know what areas it would be earmarked for?
Mr. Kemp, would you come join us for a moment so you can give, give the definitive answer to Alderman Vaughn's question?
Because I've been getting phone calls about this ten million dollars.
Yes, sir. We'll let, we'll let him answer that so that we'll have a, a good, strong record of it.
This is very first of the ten million dollar
Yes, sir. It is.
Alderman, this was what we addressed several months ago.
Right.
And it's primarily focused on our sludge project down at our lagoon, our wastewater treatment plant. So the majority of the funds would be there. Then there were other additional dollars that we hoped to actually have to do some rehabilitation and upgrades in our plant itself. So most of these funds, although they're water and sewer, are focused at the wastewater treatment facility.
And the lagoon had much, how much life left in it?
We are at the end of life, and it created a, a real need to come up with a workable solution. We went through various options and we picked one that basically we consider more sustainable because basically we'll divert the sludge, we'll treat it, and it'll actually develop into a Class A product, which is safe for anybody to use. So then we kind of divert it, and we'll have to use the lagoon for that function going forward. And so I think it's going to be a, a great thing for, for the city to perform. But to answer your question, Mayor, we are at capacity right now. We, and we hope this project will actually be in place this time next year.
Okay. And the product that is derived from that, is that saleable?
We have not found a market for it. It is usable across, so there's no problem with it. It's more of a dirt type function. We are working with very possible places that could use it, but right now, the savings just in not having to transport it to the, to a landfill or handle it is a huge savings in itself. So even if we don't sell it, we're basically ahead of the game for its disposal.
All right. Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Kemp while he's here? Alderman Vaughn, did that answer your question?
Answered my question.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of six to one, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, after the planning. First item, Mr. Havlin, Ms. Corbin. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker.
Yes, little.
I'm sorry. Alderman Little, I apologize. All right. Alderman Little. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. And this is the King Cotton Crawfish Boil, which has been held before. So any discussion from the board regarding this item? Alderman Miller?
Mayor, briefly, very briefly, I, I wanted to say, I think that we have a representative here from, from the partnership.
Yes, we do.
And I just wanted to let the partnership know how much we appreciate these events and how important they are to, well, we've already referenced tonight in talking about community economic development and encouraging people to be active within the community in Starkville, but also encouraging people from outside of the city of Starkville to come here, making Starkville authentic. And for everything that y'all do in the, the events as well, that are typically tied to some type of sporting event at Mississippi State University, y'all have done a great job recently with your, in recent years with your programming and, and knowing that people are going to come to Starkville to spend money, but what y'all do encourages people to spend more money in Starkville, and it's less of a burden on the citizens of Starkville. So I want y'all to know, and take this back to the partnership, that what y'all do for the city of Starkville is very, very important in behalf of community economic development. And I plan to support both of the events tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and yes, thank you. We may not have to come up at all. We'll see how that goes. Anything further? Any questions? Any questions? All right. I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. Second item is also a special request.
Move approval.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little.
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Discussion.
I was going to ask if they'd like to come up and speak about this.
I'm sorry? Okay. Ms. Watson, would you come up, please? If you just state
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
State your name, please.
Paige Watson.
Thank you.
I'd actually like to note a Type A. The date is April sixth, not April sixteenth.
Thank you for doing that, yes. We would have approved it of the wrong date, so.
Yeah. So this is a new event. It's called Taco Hop. The partnership, we often receive several requests for craft beer tasting events, so we decided to finally bring that in this year for 2019. This is an off weekend. There's no baseball games or any athletic events. So, yeah, restaurants will be able to come out and make street tacos, and they will also be able to profit from this event themselves outside the restaurants. And then all the money raised from the beer tasting will be toward the Main Street Association.
And there is one other event actually that's on campus, is there not?
Yes, ma'am. And we have designed the times where they kind of overlap, but you're able to go to one and then the other.
Okay. And we've coordinated it kind of with them?
Yes, ma'am.
We've let them know we're having something as well?
Yes. And also, we're really excited because Music Makers Production is helping us with the music for this event. So we're, I think it's a good draw for university to city, so.
Okay. Rosa is going to bring out a salsa dancing group or something?
We're going to try. We're going to try. We've got a couple of tricks up our sleeve, so.
Okay. All right. All right. Any discussion?
Any other questions?
I support this. It's just, it's been interesting over, over a decade to see what sticks. And Pumpkin Palooza just exploded over the first two or three years into what it is now, and Chili Fest and King Cotton. And it's just, it's interesting in this town over, over the last decade to watch Night Market. And just, I mean, it's just a host of things and, and having friends from all over the state that come in town for these, and they become annual events, and their kids, it's become an annual event for the families and just, it's interesting to see a town grow over time. So thank you for what y'all do.
time, so thank you for what y'all do.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. No further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
By a vote of five to two, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right. Item three is a variance. Mr. Hamlin?
VA 19-02 is a variance request by TEP of Starkville LLC. They're in the process of developing a mixed-use development on the site known as the road. The development will consist of two parcels. Parcel one will be multifamily development and parcel two will be a mixed-use development with commercial and multifamily. The applicant is requesting to allow a reduction in the front yard setback for several buildings as part of their proposed mixed-use multifamily development. And just to reference you on the map, this is the preliminary plat that was previously approved. This is a proposed right-of-way that is connecting. If you track this south, it goes down behind Walmart and connects, intersects with Martin Street. The request for a variance on parcel two is a front setback requirement reduction from 20 feet to 10 feet. And the request on parcel one is a reduction in the front setback requirement from 25 feet to 10 feet. On February 27th, 2019, the Board of Adjustments Appeals recommended approval of the variance request.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'm John Granberry with McCarty Granberry Engineering for the record. And, yeah.
No, I was just going to ask if there was anything you'd like to add to this. I always like to put a face to a name and a project, so.
Yes. Well, the only thing I'd like to add is in regards to our conditions that are special to our site, we're looking right now at a couple of different things. One is the environmental impacts of our borders. On two of our borders, we're bordered by blue line streams, according to Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. As y'all know, you have to stay a certain distance off the blue line streams, 150 feet to be exact, which forces us to develop more interior than on the property lines like we'd like to do. And then, of course, the access point, as Daniel pointed out, in the southwest corner there, that's our only point of access to our property. So, we're kind of forced to divide everything along that roadway, so those are the situations we're faced with.
And how is that additional access progress? I mean, you're trying to get additional access. Do we have any progress on that matter?
We are still waiting. Mike, I prefer that Edward Kemp may know a little bit more about it than I do.
He's shaking his head no, so we'll let that stand that way.
We've been in touch with Mississippi Department of Transportation and they're working on, we've got several different alternatives set up for how it moves forward, whether our access is, you know, directly through to the north right there, or it may yet jog back to the west as the pointer's indicating there. So, we're waiting on either development of the adjacent parcel to the north or some progress from Mississippi Department of Transportation.
Okay. Understood. I didn't know what the answer was. Alderman Little?
From a site workability standpoint and an aesthetic standpoint, based on staff's recommendation, I move approval.
Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Further discussion? Or questions of the applicant or of Mr. Hamlin? Alderman Walker?
Mayor, I'm inclined to approve this. I was going to add a condition, looking at street trees along that, since we're giving you the variance for that, how do we make sure that 10 feet or 15 feet that's going to be remaining? How do we begin to look at that? And the city planner provided the drawing today that showed that you are already planning to have street trees and that. And so, when it comes down for a design review, we're just going to make sure that we hold you to that, because I think that's going to be important as we're developing this new street, that we have street trees that are going to help provide a little bit of buffer and not make us a pedestrian feel so close to that. I also noted that on the plat, that those sidewalks are at least eight feet in some areas and wider in others, which exceeds the minimum standards that the city of Starkville requires, so I commend you for that. I think it will be well-used in this location. And two, I think part of my agreeing to support this variance tonight is not knowing a little bit of the, what might happen for access into the future, because I believe there might be, and I appreciate the working up against the blue line stream and how you have to do that. I believe that is a hardship opportunity to maybe move that building back a little bit to the north and to the west. However, if it turns out that that's where our access is going to be, so I can appreciate that being a true hardship where we just don't know the answer for that. Having said that, question would be, if it turns out that we are going to have access that's going to be to the north and to the west, at that point, will we be looking for that, what is currently shown as parking lot, to be replanted as part of an actual road?
Yes. We've actually allowed for an access easement that we plan, if that is the way that everything goes for our access point, to convert that over to, to be simple, right-of-way that the city would own.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant or of Mr. Hamlin or Ms. Corbin? All right. Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is variance 19-03. Okay. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Discussion. Any questions of Mr. Hamlin about this matter? Okay. Any questions of the applicant? I assume the applicant, she, okay. We'll wait and see if there are any questions. If there are, we'll bring you up. Alderman Walker?
I would just say, city planner, you may want to, if you wouldn't mind, just give a little bit of a background on what this is and why we might be approving it.
Yeah. The applicant is currently in the process of renovating and expanding the existing building. They've already gone through site plan review. They've gotten approval on that. They needed a landscape waiver due to the constraints of the site. It's one of the smaller sites in the area and it's an existing building that they're trying to rehab. And so, what it came down to when they're ready to place a monument sign, which is allowed by right in the district, is the five feet off the property line was going to cause them to lose parking spot, which they're already pretty tight on their parking anyway. And so, they're requesting the variance to move it to the property line to prevent them having to lose that parking space, which there are other businesses in that area that are already closer to the right-of-way line, if not over the right-of-way line, with their existing signs.
Okay. Alderman Miller, I see you moving forward. Is there a question there somewhere?
Yeah. You said there, so this is part of a, just curiosity, so this is part of a greater project that they're trying to do on their property in general and that they're trying to give their building some life and?
Yeah. Kind of the last hurdle to accomplish what they're trying to do or trying to do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Unanimous vote. Thank you. Item number E, or letter E, is variance of 19-04 by Neil Cuvion. Mr. Hamlin?
VA 1904 is 105 Gillespie Street. This is a variance request by Neil Cuvion on behalf of Ryan and Kirby Looney for a variance request for front setback requirements for a proposed single-family home in an R5 zone. The applicant is requesting the 25-foot front setback be reduced to 13.9 feet for proposed traditional-style single-family residence. The current plan is a driveway and a side yard. There was a garage in the back, but I believe they've altered that plan recently. But as you can see on here, the top of the page is Gillespie Street. This is the driveway on the side. And what they're showing over here is that is the remnants of the porch of the house that previously stood next door, and that house is no longer there, so you can kind of get an idea of how close some of the homes were on that street. And just, for example, if that house were still standing and there were a house on the other side, they would have been allowed to line up with that house by right. But since the houses are no longer there, they have to go through the variance process.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Cuvion?
Move approval.
Come up? I have a motion for approval of Alderman Vaughn. Is that correct?
Second.
And I have a second from Alderman Little. Anything you'd like to add to that?
Not really. I mean, really, we just wanted to really bring, kind of revitalize that area. I think to us, it's important to kind of make things kind of go back how they were. And if you even look west of that, there's a few houses in between that. There's another house that's standing that has the same, similar, you know, position to the street. So, just in, just trying to minimize things like drive and do, like a runway drive will have grass between it and just real classic, you know, interior city, you know, construction.
And we appreciate the infill and the improvements to that. It does increase the value of the neighborhood for the neighbors.
Yeah, right. It's a little bit, but it takes a lot of that to kind of hope that it catches on.
It does. And it's going on in a number of places around town, so we appreciate your contribution to that. Thank you. All right. Any questions of Mr. Cuvion? Alderman Walker?
No questions for Mr. Cuvion, other than to say, again, I appreciate this infill development. I think this will be certainly something that would be added. And for Alderman Vaughn, if you wouldn't mind considering adding a condition onto this, I'd looked at similar to that first variance about street trees, but unfortunately, out by the street, we have a lot of overhead utilities, so it wouldn't be as appropriate. But if amenable to Alderman Vaughn, I would like to add a condition that we add a sidewalk from the east to the west property line that conforms to the city sidewalk standard. And just so when we get to the actual design review, that the city engineer can make sure that when we do expand further to the east and to the west, that that sidewalk will be able to line up so grade-wise that we can.
Yep. No problem.
Is that agreeable to you, Alderman Vaughn?
That's all agreeable.
All right. That's a friendly amendment. All right. Excellent. All right. With that in mind, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. All right. Seven oh. Thank you so much. And again, we appreciate your contributing.
Listen.
Oh, okay. That's the condition. All right. And last but not least, we have a variance of 19-05.
VA 19-05, this is a variance request by Bolton Sign Company on behalf of Joe Dunlock Lap for relief from the wall size, wall sign size requirements for gateway tires located at 1301 Starkville Road in a C2 zoning district. As part of a remodeling, new signage is being proposed. The request is to use wall signs that have a total square footage of 239 square feet. The maximum allowed within a C2 zone district is 150 square feet. As you can see here, it's kind of, all the signs have to total together to get the total square footage. Our code does allow for an increase up to 250 square feet if the primary structure of the building is more than 200 feet from a right-of-way, which that is not the case in this situation. On February 27th, 2009, the Board of Adjustment Appeals recommended approval of the variance.
Okay. If you took away the circled, well, obviously, people have looked at this. You took away the circled tires. What does that leave you with if you had just had the gateway there? Does that leave you with?
They get closer to the 150, but I don't have the exact number.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Could you come forward? Anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
As he mentioned, Gateway Tires are in the process of kind of giving a facelift to some of their old locations. And Grenada, Mississippi and Starkville were two of the ones in this area. We just completed Grenada, Mississippi, and that's kind of a more accurate depiction of how the storefront would look. But this is really just a standard sign package for Gateway as a corporation.
Okay.
And that's the reason for requesting it here.
Okay. Any discussion of anyone?
I just have a.
Alderman Walker, go ahead.
A question. This may be more for, well, you might be able to answer this, maybe for the city planner. So, we've got the area around the, where it spells out tires. Is, are we, what are we, how are we calculating that? Is it everything that's inside the circles or is that part of the total sign? Or is it just the letters? And if it was just the letters, do we get, do we get closer? I think the problem that I have trying, in trying to evaluate this, is the proximity to the street, I think the gateway sign where it says tires and service center, I think probably gets the idea across that that's what we do at.
Sure.
At Gateways, we service tires and we're a service center. And I, you know, I would hope that that would be something, if not approved tonight, that the corporate would allow to look at to figure out how do we fit within this. We certainly appreciate your business being here, but when I see, you know, the gateway, that looks pretty classy and on the other, it just seems like it's a little bit overkill. And I think it's something that we've been trying to get away from. If you see it a little bit on, say, Highway 12, where we've adopted the sign ordinance, where you look at one sign that for the same building that's got 12 different signs that say what they do. And I think as you're seeing the new things begin to develop there, I think you're seeing the positive impact that our signed ordinance is having. And so, the issue that I have with this isn't the signs itself, it's that how far we're over, we're exceeding what it is that we're asking for our ordinance to allow. And if there's a way to be able to reduce either that other tire size to get us down a little bit lower or the potential of eliminating, if that were to be eliminated, Daniel, does that put them in compliance?
I don't have the application in front of me.
I can tell you, we came up with 75 square feet for the tires just by blocking it all on.
Yeah.
And if we reduce, if we omitted that 75 square feet, we would only be 15 square feet over the allotted amount.
Yeah.
We're 90 square feet over right now and that would be 75.
I think I could live with that. I think I could live with that. Is that something that has been discussed with corporate?
I would have to get with my client at Gateway Tire.
And so, I would say, I don't know where the votes are to approve or not approve this, but if that's an option, we can, you know, if this is for us to, because I'm going to vote tonight to deny.
Okay.
But I would, and I don't know where other people are, but I would certainly like to have you to have the option of potentially looking at that or if it makes the argument better for you with corporate, for us to deny this and say, this is the reason that we're over 90 feet, but if we're closer to that 15 feet, if that were to go away, then we would have the opportunity to have this approved and it would be lickety-split and, you know, we would be good to go.
Okay. I think they would probably go that route. I don't think they would want to lose the gateway and the tire and service center, but the tires over the bay doors, I think they could live with that if that was, if that would get it approved.
Would it be better not to hack tonight then or?
Well, I want to highlight something just because I think signage is important and so, and I'm not, I'm not going to beat you up because I use gateway and I don't want to walk in there and everybody throw rotten tomatoes at me. But one of the things that concerns me and that I want us to do and that we have been doing is paying attention to our code and to our signage. And the part of a variance for a sign requires that there be demonstrations of, one, that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved, and the same conditions are not applicable to other land structures and buildings in the district. Two, that literal interpretation of provisions of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of under the terms of the ordinance; three, that special conditions and circumstances have not resulted from the actions of the applicant; and four, that granting the variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. So, and that's one of those things that I really think signage is, oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I read it, and it's up there. I apologize. Y'all didn't need to hear me do that. But I do think that signage is very important. I think that's part of our aesthetics that we're looking at trying to improve. That's the reason Highway 12, that's the reason we're looking at downtown, and looking at Russell Street, and all the places that we are getting pole signs down, that in 2021, our pole signs are going to have to come down in order to meet our monuments. So I really am emphasizing, not that we think, and I personally don't think, if you take that big old tire piece away, that's not going to change whether or not somebody turns into Gateway.
I don't believe it.
Because y'all have really good service, and you're wonderful, and we appreciate you. So I encourage the, no, I was going to say, I mean, I encourage the board to either make it contingent on the tire coming down, or else table it till we can present another sign. So anyway, Alderman Walker.
I was just going to, Mayor, the city attorney can maybe lay out what some options might be here, if you don't mind.
All right, no, absolutely.
So I'm envisioning three options. Number one would be for you to withdraw your appeal tonight, and that would effectively allow the board to table this to a date certain. You could go back and talk to corporate. Can corporate deal without the tires?
Sure.
Yes or no, and then bring it back, looking like that, and redrawn. That's number one.
Okay.
Number two, if you felt comfortable representing the corporate tonight, based on the discussion that you could live without the tires, you can downgrade that on the fly and just tell the board you're not going to show the tires. They'll vote on that. Thirdly, if you're not willing to do that, and you're not willing to withdraw, the board could bring a motion contention on the tires going away, and then you would just take that back to corporate as being the deal that the board approved.
I think option three.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that being said, do we have any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Repeat option three.
Motion contention upon the word tires being eliminated.
Okay.
And the math of that works out within 15 square feet.
We would be within 15 square feet of compliance.
All right, do I have a motion?
Mayor, move approval with that, as stated by the city attorney.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, and I have a second from Alderman Little. All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that's a vote of six to one, motion carries. And are you clear on what we just did?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay, well, thank you so much. We appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is a claims docket.
Move approval.
Of a motion for a claims docket from Alderman Walker, a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
By a vote of five to two, motion carries. Let's see, next item, we remove the item, number one, Parks. Okay, I have a motion for approval of the facility use agreement with Crosspoint Church.
Second.
I have a, I'm sorry, did I get that? Alderman Little, I'm sorry. And a second from Alderman Miller, discussion.
Yes, Mayor, move.
Vice Mayor.
Flip over to the sections, and we may be cutting ourselves out of some money here. Look at Article One.
Yes, sir.
Let me know when you're there.
I'm there.
Okay, go down to 1.03, I want y'all to follow me with this, 1.03A, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, this language assumes that they're only going to use it just on Sundays, okay? But, you know, a church service could be a worship, a Bible study, a rehearsal, a special program, or any other special event. So just think with me here, Attorney. So when you think that if we deleted the language that says $1,600 per month, and $2,000 per month, because they may come in and have Bible study that Wednesday, and that church service that Sunday, right? So that's twice a week, right, Mr. Attorney?
It is.
So that's $800 for four Sundays, that's $3,200. And for five Sundays, that's $4,000. Because what we're assuming, that with that language, we're assuming that they're only going to be there just at one time. But, you know, they go Sunday, and on this language, they go there Wednesday for Bible study that's free. They go back for choir rehearsal Thursday, and go for another event on Friday, they don't pay for that.
So if I hear you accurately, and I don't mean to interject, but I think the fix would be just to strike the parenthetical.
Yeah, the $1,600 in that...
The cap.
The cap.
Yeah, so it just would say total fee of $400 per use, paid on a monthly basis, no matter what the use is.
Correct. And therefore, we'll get the intended amount that we want to get, because we'll be losing what we do otherwise. Yes, sir.
So the board would certainly be free to bring that motion, contingent upon that parenthetical being strictly...
Well, the gentleman from three, I think, asked him would he accept that.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, all right, I have a motion, a second. Mr. Logan, would you come up and let's inquire, because I'm curious to know if they do that, actually.
Well, I don't know, I'm just bringing it up.
I don't know either, I'm just...
I'm just trying to save us some money.
No, no, make some money.
Give us some money.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing this to our attention, as far as what the actual use is being done is Sunday only.
Okay, so they have not inquired about it, but this would handle that if they were to do so.
Correct, and it notes any changes have to be, you know, communicated and all that. Yeah, but the actual use is Sunday only.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to double-check on that. All right, so we have, and we've got that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? Alderman Sistrung?
And they, there have been times when they have had to accommodate our scheduling for events at Parks.
Correct. Good news is, we're getting more interest from events and things like AAU basketball tournaments that like to hold multi-day events on weekends, and that really necessitated this agreement coming forward. And so just, you know, having a mechanism in place, an actual better agreement with more, you know, insurance that meets our city requirements. So this is, this is new, you know, but glad to have them on board, just like we've been doing with all the other facility use agreements the past year and a half, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. And Alderman Walker is going to recuse himself on this next item, so we will take it out once he's out. All right, next item is consideration of approval of the facility use agreement with Swing Elite 11U, is that correct? 11U, okay, for use of a baseball field. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. All right, discussion of that at all. Alderman Vaughn.
What age group is this?
So with the 11U, you're nine and 10-year-old. So yeah, 11U means they can't be, you know, it's 11.
Nine, 10.
Yeah, nine, yeah, nine, 10, and 11, I believe is how baseball works, but there's a 10 and 11.
It's like Zacher, you can't be 11.
Oh, okay, yeah, 11U, so it's around that nine, 10 range, nine and 10.
That's confusing, so it's nine and 10, and because there's 11 there, that's where you stop?
There can be five and six.
Oh, oh, okay.
Anybody under 11.
Okay, got it, okay. I'm thoroughly confused now. All right, any further, any further questions?
Where's Swing Elite?
It is a competitive baseball team, so we just mentioned, like we're doing with Crosspoint, you know, the past year and a half, been working to get facility use agreements with all these many groups that have been using Parks and Recreation facilities, and travel competitive baseball groups is another group. And this is just the first one. We've been able to get to come to the table, get insurance on, and just a better way to keep track of it. And as we're getting ready for rec baseball season, it's pretty imperative, we know where these competitive teams are. So it's good timing, and glad to have them on board with the facility use agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Carver?
Well, I got you, I want to say this, like, 650 kids signed up for baseball?
Based on today's last-minute phone calls, I believe the last number I had was about 685 kids signed up for youth recreational baseball, which is close to a 10% increase from last year.
I was going to tell you that your department, in the last just a couple of years, I've noticed through the Sports Illustrated app and through email, has become more fluid, has become better about disseminating information out to parents and coaches, and so I've just noticed in the last, and people are taking notice in the last 18 to 24 months, more fluid communication from y'all, and the whole process seems to be working a little bit better.
Well, thank you. And just a point of note, every single sport, you know, this, I guess we consider, or at least I do, from the fiscal standpoint, I consider youth basketball our first sport of the fiscal year, and we just finished that up. But youth basketball, youth softball, youth baseball, every single one of those sports this year has increased from past years, and basically, all those sports have increased going on about three years now. So that's a credit to our athletic staff, and of course, people answering the phone and everything. So thank you for the compliment.
And based on the Vice Mayor's comments earlier, and those comments there, I would like it if you would make a, be prepared to make a presentation perhaps at the work session next time around, and tell us what's going on at the Parks.
And I would also say, ask the mayor to come out and do the opening pitch on the SBA ceremonies on Friday.
Wait a minute, I'm doing the opening pitch on Friday?
Yeah.
At the ball? I am, I am, and I have been practicing.
And that'll be, that'll be, we're very excited about that event. We'll have some more information, Facebook event, all that coming out soon to talk about that. But we're also taking the opportunity to recognize Starkville Baseball Association, folks like the Karloff family, who have contributed so much to youth baseball over the many, many years in Starkville. And that opening ceremony was just a really, really good idea that staff come up with that we're really excited about, and it's going to be a chance to really highlight the work of Starkville Baseball Association over the decades, and we're glad to partner with them this season to make the baseball season work, and just really, really excited about where that's going.
Alderman Miller?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate your comment about trying to be more accommodating to these, like, travel baseball. When I was coaching basketball, I would have loved to had more communication to, sometimes we were desperate, sometimes, you know, just to find a court, and I would have gladly paid, you know, to work with the city. So, you know, the facility's there, we ought to encourage it to be used, you know? So I appreciate that, I can admire it, thank you.
That's great. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, just one thing, and I know you have some safeguard, Mr. Director, it may have been on the prior agreement, I just want to mention for you, you get away, say the city will issue keys to the user for and during the use of the facility. You have some, I'm sure, some good accountability for those keys in case something happens and comes up.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's very good, very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything further? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, by a vote of six, unanimous vote, six, oh, motion carries. All right, Police Department was on consent, and we have one item remaining, which is consideration of a resolution to rescind the joint sewer billing and disconnection agreement with the OCTC Community Water Association. This probably needs a little bit of explanation. Yes, Mr. Latimer?
I can try it, and if I miss anything, Terry, I'll let you fill in the facts. But on May 16th of 2017, Starkville entered into a joint billing and disconnection agreement with the OCTC Water Association for Starkville to be able to serve a portion of this new development that Johnny Moore was doing behind Faith Baptist Church on South Montgomery. Because for the city to be able to serve within that one mile beyond its city limits, it has to have an agreement as to how water and sewer is going to work. After that, though, the city and OCTC Water Association entered into a joint petition for the city to be able to just serve that territory, because OCTC didn't want to do it anymore, and the city did. And so the PSC very recently approved that joint petition, but that joint petition was contingent upon this agreement being rescinded. So all we're doing is rescinding this agreement that no longer matters, because Starkville has the territory anyway.
Okay, so it's housecleaning.
With approval.
All right, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and that was, I had, that was six, oh, Alderman Vaughn was absent. All right, we have, that concludes our open session of the meeting. We'll now go into, well, we may go into closed determination session for...
Close session.
I have a motion from Alderman Little, and a second from Alderman Miller, to go into a closed determination to determine the need to go into a executive session. If you would, please clear the room, and we will, we will make that determination, and let you know, we'll be calling people back in for that call, call of the meeting. let you know we'll be calling people back in for that call, call of the meeting.